President.
Alderman Telford.
Got you.
Alderman Cruda.
Present.
Alderman Key.
Yeah, they're calling the roll call now.
Alderman Key.
Present.
Alderman Randall.
Present.
Alderman Rager.
Present.
Mayor Clark.
President. Next item on the agenda is the case for the regions. Alderman Roberts, would you be so kind as to lead us in prayer and pledge?
Sure. We bow our heads. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for this day because this is the day that you created. We thank you for our comings, our goings, and everything, Lord Jesus, that you do on behalf of the great citizens of the great city of Harvey. Lord Jesus, we want to thank you for keeping us in a reasonable portion of good health and our right frames of mind. We thank you, Lord, for everything that has come about, all the good things that have come about in our lives, Lord Jesus. We want to ask you for wisdom and knowledge, Lord Jesus, in tonight's meeting. We want you to walk through us, Lord Jesus, and manifest your Holy Spirit in the name of Jesus Christ to make decisions on behalf of our great citizens. Lord Jesus, this is our prayer and we ask it all in Jesus' name and all the saints under the sound of my voice signify by saying amen.
Amen.
President. To the flag of the United States of America, to the God who sustains one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes dated October 25th, 2021. This was a regular meeting. Chair will entertain the motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
One second.
Motion by the first, second, and the fifth. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The opinion of the chair, the highest having, the motion will carry. Next, approval of minutes dated October 25th, 2021. This is a committee of the whole. Chair will entertain the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the sixth, second by the fifth. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Opinion of the chair, the highest having, the carries. Next item of approval of minutes dated November 2nd, 2021, special city council meeting. The chair will entertain the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by the fifth, second by the third. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next item is the approval of minutes dated November 2nd, 2021, regular meeting. Chair will entertain the motion.
We didn't, we didn't have a meeting.
No, we didn't.
November 8th, excuse me, that's supposed to be November 8th, 2021, regular meeting, even though there wasn't much, so the chair will entertain the motion.
Motion to approve minutes from November 8th, 2021?
Yes.
Second.
Motion by the fifth, second by the first. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Number five on the agenda is bills for payment list, November 8th, 2021. The chair will entertain the motion.
So moved.
It's motion by the third.
Second.
Second by the first.
Discussion?
Yes.
Is there an opinion from the finance?
You can ask them.
The bills list for November 8th have not had an opportunity to go before the finance meeting because we haven't had a finance meeting and the bills from November 22nd were just received today. So I was talking with the co-chair and we're going to plan to have a finance meeting within the next couple of days.
What's the recommendation, recommendation for finance?
I would think that that was the recommendation.
I mean, he gave us status, he didn't give a recommendation.
Well, the recommendation is the same thing. We're going to have a meeting one day next week at your convenience and we'll discuss the bills list from November 8th and November 22nd.
Now, we can just either table it or refrain, refrain from voting on it until, until the meeting's.
Yeah, that's why I asked, if we had a motion to approve.
Yeah, because that's our standard.
Okay.
You know, usually what we've done, so there's no reason to change that. The next item on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions for the city of Harvey over business and ordinance, rescinding ordinance number 2020-3401, approving an economic incentive and public rights partnership agreement by and between the city of Harvey and Harvey Shopping Center LLC.
Point of order.
Let me, let me finish. Refer to the finance committee on July 12th, 2021. Chair recognizes the order from the sixth, excuse me.
Mayor, we'd like to remove this from, from the agenda tonight until we have further review because there was some additional information that was sent in from Shopping Center LLC that was referred to committee and supposed to have been reviewed by the city's law firm and we haven't received any information on that yet, just to find out if it's going to be declined or approved.
Well, let me make sure that this is clear. Any additional information that was submitted by Harvey Shopping Center LLC would create a brand new agreement. It does not amend this agreement. This agreement says that the city of Harvey was supposed to make certain performances and that they were supposed to make certain performances, those things. And we were to strike like, for instance, in the previous finance meeting, from my understanding, Mr.
Katz.
Yeah, said that he wanted to loan the city of Harvey monies without going into extreme detail about it, but he wanted the loaned monies and they have us pay the taxes for it. No, that was one of the things that I said. That would create, that would create a brand new agreement. So my point is, whatever was said in that meeting and whatever additional documentation or whatever he's supposed to provide, if he creates a new agreement, it does not affect this agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I've had extensive conversation with Mr. Katz and he did not say that he wanted to loan the city of Harvey money. He said he wanted to give and pay the loan off himself through his investors and he was having agreement flowed up to that effect. We haven't seen anything yet, so.
Right, because he hasn't done it. And if he hasn't done it, we can't make him perform something that he's not willing to do.
Okay, well, what's, why, why's the haste and rescinding it and why don't we give him an opportunity to do it?
Because that agreement is different from this agreement. This agreement says one thing is supposed to happen. If he were to, for instance, pay the loan himself or do whatever it is that you're talking about, that would be a totally different, distinctive agreement. And actually, in fact, we wouldn't have to actually go into an agreement for him to pay his own bill. We wouldn't have to make an agreement for him to pay his own bill. He would just pay his own bill. But, once again, those are two separate, separate issues.
And I think that, Mayor, we're putting a cart before the horse and because of the fact that there was some new developments that were brought up at the last finance meeting, I think that it's only fair to both parties if we can see some documentation from the new agreement. That's all I'm asking.
From the, you were saying, I don't think you hear yourself saying, you're saying from the new agreement.
The new agreement.
Right. We're trying to get rid of the old agreement.
Right. Why would we be in such a hasty manner to get rid of the old agreement until we actually see the new?
We see the new one, yeah.
I, I, I'm in favor of getting rid of the old one in order to bring the new one in, but I'd like to see the new one first before we get rid of the old.
Okay, got it. Chair recognizes the fifth ward.
I'm just going to ask, because I had a question, but you, you answered it, but can you, can you just pull your mic up a little bit? I, I'm struggling to hear you.
This way?
I mean, towards your mouth.
Oh, toward my mouth?
Yeah, just a little bit, I'm sorry.
I didn't know that. I didn't know this thing actually worked that way.
Yeah, now, now that is, I think this is the first meeting where it's actually plugged into the system, so now we can hear you a little bit better.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so, so, okay, I saw some other hands, just to make sure I get them out quick. Chair recognizes the fourth ward.
Thank you, Mayor. When it comes to the ordinance 2020-3401, since we're still waiting on the legal information and legal documenta, documentation, why is it not possible, instead of rescinding it, to just amend it on, once we get all the information in, amend it?
That is possible. In my opinion, I think that the amendments would create such a substantial, substantial new document that in and itself becomes a totally new document. An amendment is, you know, say, for instance, if there's some wordings that's left out or, you know, some slight changes, from what I understand and from talking to Mr. Katz, this is a totally different and distinct agreement. But, but I, but I do understand, you know, your point. But, yeah, if it's going to be that substantial, then it would be beneficial to have another document created as a result of it. That's, that's. Chair, are you done?
Yes.
Chair recognizes the order for the first ward.
Thank you. I just have a question here. This has been on the agenda, actually, since end of June, beginning of July, when it was sent to the finance committee. It's already, if my memory serves correct, four months has already went by. I do not think this is in haste. I do like the idea, if they're willing to put a new agreement on the table to entertain that, once we get, once they do their due diligence and submit the paperwork, but as far as this particular ordinance, as it was written, obviously, from the discussion that several of the aldermen had with this vendor, that there are changes going to occur. So amending it would be one possibility, but right now, to clear this from our agenda, I, I would propose, let us rescind this ordinance with the guarantee of entertaining a new proposal, a new ordinance, once the vendor sends the appropriate documentation. Because at this point, we're sending precedence to all the other potential vendors out there putting together in good faith and then rescind, procrastinating in, in our decision to move forward.
Chair recognizes the second ward.
So I did participate in that finance committee meeting and I was under the impression as similar to Alderman Key, that we were going to amend this agreement once it received approval from your office. Mr. Williams was at the meeting rather than rescinding it, but I don't believe we should rescind it until we actually see the new proposal because there are potentially legal liabilities attached to it.
What would those legal liabilities be?
I don't know, that was something brought up in the committee meeting, I'm not attorney.
So you think we should rescind it?
No, I think we should wait.
Did anybody in the, in the committee meeting bring up legal liabilities and explain what those legal liabilities were?
There's no liability that I'm aware of, I guess. My only question is, I think, I'm in the mindset that that meeting has took in place well over three weeks ago. And, and so my only question is, has your office received anything from them since then?
No, we have not.
And I'm in the mindset that it don't take that long to submit something within three weeks if they were serious about making this particular opportunity work and therefore, I don't know if we have a motion at this time, do we?
Yeah, Alderman Roberts.
Do we have a motion?
Actually, the motion was to remove this from the agenda until the next meeting. I think we should, it's only fair to give them two more weeks. And to address my colleague over in the first ward, she said she wanted to get this off the agenda, well, that's exactly what I'm trying to do tonight, to remove this from the agenda, at least for two more weeks. Now, if your office hasn't received any documentation from LLC Shopping Center at the next meeting, then I won't have a problem with rescinding.
Well, that would be one improper form of the motion. The motion either is, is in the positive and is to approve.
I make a motion to refer it to finance committee.
We can, we can do that.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to refer that, it's not, it's in the finance committee.
I make a motion to refer it to legislative committee.
We haven't taken it out of the committee.
Oh, then leave it there.
So the first thing.
All, all we, all we need to do is just, just give them two weeks on it, just take it off the agenda.
First thing we need to do, first thing we need to do is, I need a motion to remove it from, what committee was it in? Remove it from the finance committee. That's the first thing I would need. And then after that, I would be seeking a motion to.
I really don't think that's the right thing to do, but.
Motion to remove from finance committee.
Second.
We have a motion for, from the fifth and second from the first. Madam Turk, would you please call the roll.
Alderman Randall.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Yes.
Alderman Telford.
No.
Alderman Wondr Winsky.
Yes.
Alderman Cruda.
No.
Alderman Rager.
Oh, yes.
Motion to rescind?
Or motion to approve, is what it would be.
Motion to approve, to rescind.
Yeah, so we have a motion from the fifth.
Second.
Second from the first. Madam Clark, would you please call the roll.
Alderman Rager.
No.
Alderman Cruda.
No.
Alderman Telford.
No.
Alderman Randall.
Yes.
Alderman Wondr Winsky.
Yes.
Alderman Key.
Now that issue has been settled. Now we can move on. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance approving an economic incentive redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Harvey, Harvey Lofts LLC. Chair will entertain the motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Um, but. Before we move forward, I want to actually get on the record, we did send over a legal opinion because that was one of the issues that was surrounding this particular agenda item and we did send over legal opinions. The first thing I wanted to make sure was that all of the aldermen received a copy of the legal opinion.
In regard to, we received two legal opinions?
No, regarding MVAH properties.
I have received them.
Okay. Did all of the aldermen receive their opinion?
I have received.
Hearing, if I hear, no one says that they didn't receive the opinion. So, because I understand this has been through, I forgot how many times we've brought this before now. I want to make sure that we get our legal counsel to clarify to the counsel exactly what the possibilities and possible potential consequences of not approving the project would be. So, counsel, would you please take it from here? Give me your mic.
This is going straight up. I feel like this is like you can't. This is it, I'm going to do it straight up.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, councilor.
Good evening.
It appears everyone has indicated that they've received the county's opinion, so I don't know if you're in all, but it's pretty clear that the city council's zone already establishes a right for the developers to proceed with this project. However, if you don't approve the RDA, there were some things that I specifically wanted to point out for the record that I would caution the council to, to take a close look at. And that's specifically on page two of the opinion about what the city stands to lose. The city could lose the sale of long paid city owned property and $151,000. The city could lose insulation and maintenance while broadband network facilities offering high speed internet service to city residents, which is a major issue all across the state. The city will not be able to install telecommunications facilities on the road of the building. And this is in addition, council members, to credibility of the council, which by the possibility of the community's reputation to developers across the state, across the country, those who already believe it's difficult to do business in the city, this development should go forward and I certainly would have to take questions.
You, you said several reasons why this development shouldn't go forward?
Should go forward.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that.
Tell us about this telecommunication on top of the building, I never heard of this.
Well, most buildings that are some significant height, you know, there's, there's a possibility for telecommunications facilities and this is one that is indicated, that's one that's possible for telecommunications.
Okay, thank you.
You have a question?
No, but there is a motion in the second.
Yeah, well, now, now, Mr. Nick, if you would like, would you be so kind as, oh, we need to give him the microphone.
Hey, Nick, give me two D's. Is it working? Good? All right, Mayor, thank you, Mr. City Council, thank you for the opportunity. I just wanted to review some of the.
You can take off your mask, fellas.
Just wanted to review some of the reasons for considering an approval in Harvey Lofts as a residence. This is a private $17 million project which should be privately funded and privately operated next to City Hall. In summary, you know, we have a problem right now, which is a vacant unsafe building. The solution is to create a safe state of the art $17 million dollar private residence for Harvey residents, workforce housing for some of the Amazon employees and the e-commerce industry. We are following the standard legal process for approving a developer project, the RDA process that the council reviewed. I want to touch on some of the economic benefits and the lastly some of the safety benefits. So in terms of background, you know, we're talking about a $16 million project, modern architectural design. Some of you actually took the opportunity to drive by the existing building that they built called Cistral Lofts by Midway Airport. So it would be, you know, a high quality, modern facade or brick, if you see that building. Now, this is the old, this is what we're looking at right now, is an unsafe, vacant, abandoned building at block five today. I can see it's been mowed up for some time with water in there, it's mold, you know, so it's a, it's a significant safety problem for people that would want to actually try to go inside the building. This is what's being proposed, it's a five story building. It creates some density, which is what we want. We want more people to move to Harvey, we want a reverse population loss. One way to do that is to allow for more people to live in a particular block. This, by the way, is similar to what's been built at the Cistral Lofts on by Midway Airport. Here's another view, another rendering facing from the east. And here's a more of a bird's eye view for where we go. It would be immediately to the south of City Hall. In terms of what the developer brings to the table, MVAH is a, is a national developer of workforce housing. They have done a lot, primarily in Midwest, including Indiana, Illinois, Wisconsin, and Michigan. They build homes to help people live where they work and where they commute to. They've created, I think this number's probably been updated, but at least 6,000 units. They've won awards for property management, which is important consideration, but also for architecture, design, and development. The process we followed is a process that's been established by our legal team, which is to go through a zoning process first and then, here tonight, with redevelopment agreement process. The zoning process, we already approved in March, which was to approve a PUD, so there was an ample review, a lot of public comment, a lot of public input because we brought the planning commission to review the proposal. So there's been multiple meetings and it's been thoroughly vetted. I should also point out that this is funded by the Illinois Housing and Development Authority and IDA poses their own set of requirements because IDA is actually the main conduit, the main financier, working with the MVAH on this project. So they impose a lot of strict requirements to make sure it passes muster from their standpoint. Some of the economic benefits, it's, first of all, it's a major investment, you've got 50 construction jobs in the next 18 months when we break ground this March, March next year. It'll be building permanent revenue, but more importantly, it's going to create wealth for the people that work, are able to live and work there, live in quality housing, but also quality housing that doesn't break their budget. So they can actually raise a family in Harvey and live in quality housing, but also access those jobs that are bringing up a solid account and will count. Long term, it's going to create some TIF revenue, sales tax revenue, there will be one or two property manager jobs and there will be someone nine, nine to five, five days a week on site monitoring the property, so that's a bonus. The people that live there will support downtown businesses and patronize restaurants that will be there or are already near the downtown and it'll just improve the overall vitality of the downtown. There's some environmental benefits too, if you're concerned about the direction of the environment, this is a way for people not that rely on cars. The building itself will be Energy Star certified, so there's a lot of benefits on that side In terms of safety, the subject of safety's come up quite a bit regarding this project. We believe that this is a huge safety win relative to the status quo. This is what I took earlier today. The building since six months ago has gotten, gotten worse frankly. I mean, now there's more graffiti, it fights for disinvestment and, and damage, and damages going on to the building. I've been inside the building with the developer and can assure you that there's a lot of mold and safety problems there with a lot of block replacement as well as broken windows. There's just, that's another example of the disinvestment deterioration and then that's another set that picture. One thing to point out too is when you have people living in the downtown area, whether it's Chicago or Northbrook, Evanston, or Harvey, you have eyes on the street. There's been a lot of density taking place in Midway for Evanston, Arlington Heights, Homewood. So that creates that vitality, that virtuous cycle of activity in the downtown. Those people are going to help by virtue of just eyes on the street. You know, we use those opportunities, those crimes of opportunity and I think that's a major benefit. It's hard to quantify that, but you, you know it, you feel it when you're walking around at six o'clock at night, if there's people on the street, you want to be on that street, but it's an empty block without any foot traffic, that's not such a great. So this is helpful in that regard. And then last, and I'll let the MVAH addresses, there's a lot of physical security investments taking place with lighting, security cameras, heat bots, and so forth. So all in all, you know, a major safety win for the city of Harvey. I think at this point, I'll just wrap it up and let the MVAH folks present some specific slides and then answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors, for giving me the opportunity to present. You'll see some similar pictures in Nick in my slides, but I'll try and go through them fairly quickly. The first thing I wanted to do is give you a little background on MVAH. As Nick said, we do have operations in 13 states. We are long term owners of real estate. We've been developing real estate for 25 years and in that time, we have sold off less than 4% of our portfolio. So, you know, it is our intention to be your neighbor here, City Hall, for, you know, decades to come. You know, these buildings have a lifetime and it lasts over 50 years and we expect to own it for at least that long. Next slide. And you can see, we work in lots of different states and lots of different markets, including suburban, suburban and suburban areas like this one. We spend a lot of. We spent a lot of time looking at Harvey, understanding what was here. As Nick said, we've been through the PUD process, the plan commission, to try and build the product that best fits the community. Next slide here. Here's a couple of examples of our residential communities that we've built. We can just go through these pictures kind of quickly. The first one was Cicero Senior Lawps, which was one that some of the folks here in the room today have toured, and we're ending up here with attitude lawps, one of our newest buildings from online. Thanks. And I'm sure you guys all know where it is, it is literally adjacent, but I always like to include a map for clarity to say it shows you we're right there on the corner. You know, I think that location is phenomenal for a number of reasons. It's terrific to be great downtown, create eyes on the street, but also to connect our residents to the amenities that are here in Harvey in the coming. In particular, we're excited about the TOB opportunity. Not only have we had a lot of employers here, many of whom have expressed support for this project, but because of the phenomenal transportation resource that you guys have here in Harvey, our residents will be able to seek employment, entertainment, visit family, and all of those things much more easily than a building that was isolated from those public transportation opportunities. I also like to underscore that this is really workforce housing. You notice I led with, you know, the transit-oriented development connecting our residents to the climate opportunities. We expect that the average income in this building will be about thirty-three thousand dollars per year. We have units that range from one to three-bedroom units, so obviously there's a considerable range there. But just to qualify to be in one of our smallest units, you have to be making at least fifteen thousand change per year. Functionally, you have to be able to pay about two and a half times, or you have to have an income sufficient to pay about two and a half times that rent range you see down there. And so, you'll look in there at five twenty-four for a one-bedroom apartment, up to nine twenty-five for a three-bedroom. There's a range in there of types and styles of units. And we'll have fifty, one of those, this is new construction, it will be replacing that building that you saw in these pictures and probably on your way here today. We do believe that, you know, new construction will spur investment from other folks. So I know it's been said there, but we'd like to think we're setting a trend here, and it's a trend that we also want to be followers in. So hopefully, this is just the first phase of development that we can make happen in downtown Harvey. And our tenant population is working families. We've installed some amenities with that in mind, including an activity room designed for kids and a playlot next door, which gives them a chance to get some outdoor recreation. This slide please. This is just a sample of the two-bedrooms and the one-bedroom. I couldn't fit the three-bedroom one here without making another slide, but I wanted to see that these are modern contemporary apartments. They are, you know, they're efficient and spacious. Ida does have requirements that we have to meet in the design of these. And it's important to underscore that they will also be accessible and adaptable units of this. When you find smaller buildings and more retrofitted rental apartments, like maybe more typical for this market, it can be hard to find those accessible units in elevator buildings for ADA, for residents with ADA needs. So we think that would be an additional amenity in this community. And we didn't come up with this on our own, we don't throw darts at the map to figure out a way to do these developments. Harvey, the city of Harvey has done a number of studies over the years, and they have identified, have identified workforce housing as a major need particularly transit-oriented development. We also participated in the study this year, understanding that, and believe the recommendations are right in line with that. We also think it's important to recognize that forty-two percent of the population falls within the income range. So forty-two percent of the population in Harvey falls in the range of the folks that will be able to live in our apartments, and we think that gives us a strong indication that these apartments are going to fill up quickly. We believe the market demand is strong, and we believe that we'll be able to develop really positive community care. And I also like to point out, you know, not just responsive to the community demands for housing, we are going to create considerable temporary jobs during construction. There will be two permanent jobs to make. Nick alluded to it, we have onsite staff Monday through Friday, nine to five. We have a community manager there who's the property manager, but also is responsible, we call them the community manager, because they're responsible for making sure that our buildings are part of the community, and someone that yourselves and other members of the community can reach out to, interact with, and help us understand what we can be doing better. And it's their job to be proactive and reach out to community organizations and make sure that we tap into all the resources that are in the area for our residents. And I always like to hit on the community benefits, to go outside that. We always make our community room available for events. It's within reason in our opening hours, not typically for parties and those kinds of things, but community meetings, community events, informational meetings, and open houses. We specifically carry an extra insurance policy to make sure that that room can be an amenity for the entire community, not just the residents in our building. Although in fairness, we do also throw Thanksgiving parties, Christmas parties, have a little fun there ourselves. We'll also have an onsite fitness center. As I mentioned, we'll have the recreation area outside and the accessible units. But I did want to highlight that we always do three-hundred-and-sixty-degree cameras on the exterior of the building, all of the stairways, and always are securely monitored, and the parking area. This has nothing to do with where our buildings are. Every one that I have built in the four years that I have been at MVAH has this. We have a twenty-four-hour onsite monitoring service that pays attention to those cameras, looks to see if there's anything unusual. That monitoring service also has an eight-hundred number that's available to our residents and to the public to let us know if anything's going on. We cannot be sort of, you know, feet on the ground at all times, but we want our residents to be empowered to get ahold of people, to get ahold of the community manager and the service tech to address issues. So you'll see that there too. And with that all, let's put it up to any questions you may have about the project.
Chair recognizes the alderman from the second ward.
Has MVAH ever sued the municipality?
Uh, never been.
Have y'all ever sued any municipality that you guys were working with?
Me have never sued a municipality, nor been sued by a municipality.
Okay. Have you guys ever had a proposal that was shot down by a council?
Uh, yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes the alderman from the fifth ward.
Thank you for your time, sir. My only question was, well, actually I have two questions. So one, with your monitoring service, if a complaint was filed and needed immediate response, where does that request for assistance come from?
So where does it come from, or where is the remedy?
Where's the remedy, yes.
Okay, so our community manager and service tech trade off being on call, that's a similar. And our regional, our Illinois Regional Manager of Property Management is also alerted. It's a similar system to the way a fire alarm would work, and we treat it the same way, regardless of the severity of the request that comes in, it's treated as an immediate, you know, need for attention.
And in your selection process for tenants, do you perform financial and criminal background checks?
Of course, absolutely. Our tenant selection plan is approved by the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and it follows the best practices in the industry. We do both credit and criminal background checks as part of the process, and we also check every one of those good references, and we ask you to put on the application.
What do you exclude as a result of these checks?
Can be somewhat of a case-by-case basis, but certainly major violent crimes are an absolute red flag for us. If the case basis comes more in the misdemeanor and some nonviolent felonies. I couldn't rattle off exactly all of our policies, you know, by statute at this point.
Is it because you're unaware of them, or you're unsure of them?
It's because of unaware, and we have a written standard operating procedure called a tenant selection plan. I just, you know, I don't know every excluded crime that we've gone through.
Are you a part of that process, or is that someone else?
I'm not. I am a finance and construction specialist. We have a compliance team and a property management team that are both accredited by IREN and licensed in the state of Illinois and approved by the local housing authority.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes the alderman from the first ward.
Thank you. Now, when you're saying your minimum income, could that be social security? Could that be disability? Could that be, this is our working class housing? So how does, how does the revenue base now, just say hypothetically, I get laid off, but I'm paying my...
Sue, it is, it is all forms of income recognized by the Internal Revenue Service. Those are the folks that are auditing our management and our income verification process. So SSI or disability, those types of income do count towards that total for those folks who are receiving them. So does alimony or child support are other typical expenses.
Okay, before we move forward, I wanted to have the, well, first of all, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate your time, coming. I want to make sure that our corporation counsel makes it clear as far as we have a question regarding possible liability, so we want to make sure we get that clear.
No.
It's not on.
Let me, one of me, I'll propose a question about whether the developer has sued before. You know, every situation is different, and I do think the facts of the situation, based on the council's actions, approval, and everything that is done subsequently, the situation is certainly one where the developer is consistent, clearly suing the city in this regard. As I've said to you all before, our problem with litigation, we work very well, but litigation is very costly. And in this instance, this is a weird proportion. It's important for us to vouch for you to avoid giving it to cause litigation with a lot of facts and issues. Also, I want to mention that projects that are approved by the Illinois Housing Development Authority are very complicated to prove. They are screened, they go through several council screening, and most communities highly or approved by the projects such as this. So there's, again, that would go to the city's certification, a while, difficult business in the city. So I think you have two real issues to consider here. The legal liability aspect, which is pretty real, because you have someone who's ever sued a city before, that's an actor, especially in these paths, and then expressly, probably, Ida has already given its opinion on it. I really do believe that this could really go to the criminal, to the city certification.
No, any, chair recognizes the alderman from the second ward.
Attorney, you referenced, Ida gave an opinion, where is that opinion at?
That's based on experience. I've been doing this for a hundred years. My mafia career provided that their processes are...
That makes sense. Alright, thank you.
We started with the questions, the chair detained a motion to approve. An ordinance, yeah, well, an ordinance approving an economic incentive and redevelopment agreement by and between the city of Harvey and Harvey Lawps LLC, chair detained a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion by the first, second by the fifth. Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Alderman Key?
No.
Alderman Tober?
No.
Alderman Kruger?
Since I'm unsure, I'm abstaining.
Alderman Drawinski?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
No.
Alderman Ringelout?
Yes.
You should go back to the extension, you go back to the extension. No, you go back to the extension.
Alderman, are you going to Spain?
Yes.
Ain't that what he said?
Motion passed.
Motion passed.
Yep. Alright, thank you very much. Our next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a franchise agreement between the Comcats of Illinois, Indiana, and the city of Harvey.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by the second, second by the fifth. Madam Clerk, would you please call the row?
Alderman Tober?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Kruger?
Yes.
Alderman Drawinski?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Ringelout?
Yes.
Motion carried, and then resolution two thousand six hundred.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a renewal agreement between the city of Harvey, Illinois, and the property registration champions, ProChamps LLC. The chair detained a motion to approve.
Some of.
Motion by the fifth.
Second.
Second by the first.
Discussion.
Chair recognizes the alderman from the second ward.
Could someone from ProChamps or Administrator Williams tell me what this program has done for the city outside of charge people these fees? What has this program accomplished?
Actually, we do have a representative from ProChamps here, and Mr. Williams. Yeah, we have the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman, and residents of your home. The question that was just asked is what has ProChamps done besides charging money for this building? First and foremost, no resident, I repeat, no resident has paid a fee in the city of Harvey or in any of the three-hundred-and-fifty communities across America. The fees are collected from the banks, not the residents. We have never contacted a resident in this town, we never will.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but that's false.
Okay, then, if you're confused, please forward us the names and an address of who we contacted, and we'll take them off the list.
Thank you.
Now, what have we done since 2019 in December, let's hear it. We have registered seven-hundred-and-seventy-nine foreclosed properties. We have registered six-hundred-and-ninety long-term rental registrations, not individual units, just a project that was just before you. It would not be for each one of the apartments, it would be one registration for that entire building. Vacant properties, we have registered seventy-two, totals one-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-one properties that have registered. What is a registration? It means that at the staff's fingertips, they have the names, addresses, and phone numbers of the people that actually own that property. Now, that being said, that doesn't mean Mr. and Mrs. Jones that lives there, they don't own them, as long as there's a mortgage. The mortgagee owns that property, meaning the bank. That's what the information is there for. Why is the information important? Property maintenance issues. The grass is this tall, gutters are falling off, windows are broken? Yes, you got a rent ticket, they do the ticket, they mail it to that house. No, don't do that anymore, send it right to the bank. That's the information that we provide. Dollars and cents that have been remitted to this city from the fees that are collected. Twenty nineteen, and we were only here for about a month, twenty-nine thousand nine-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars and forty cents. Twenty-twenty was our first full year. 2020 was our first full year. We remitted to this community $126,248.40. 2021, we remitted so far, we're still November, December, and we've got our October shit. So it's really three months, three months more coming, $106,166.80. That totals $262,470.60 that this community has received from the program. I'll take any other questions.
Chair recognizes the alderman from the fourth ward.
Yep, you finish.
Oh, yeah, because I was still talking. So now that you have done all of this registration, got us the data, what is the benefit of keeping the program outside of us charging them some additional money?
You may not be aware of the fact that there was a moratorium on foreclosure and evictions.
No, tell me about it.
It was just lifted from July 31st of 2021.
Okay.
It was in place for over 20 months. That means there's going to be a lot more foreclosures being filed and a lot more evictions coming down the road.
Okay.
So to stay on top of it, that's what we want to do. Then, just take for example, the foreclosures, the 779, they're all still in foreclosure. Why shouldn't the banks pay this, this community's money for being stolen foreclosures? I mean, you're welcome to stop it. We have got, they said, over 350 communities nationally since 2009. Not one community has ever posted a report. You could be the first.
Thank you.
Yes, that's right, ma'am. It's okay if I...
Chair recognizes the alderman from the fourth ward.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for coming today, sir. I have a few questions. What, what year or what month was that, that you came to Harvey?
2019, I believe it was December, right toward the end of the year. Finally got through.
Okay, second question is, just got a few questions. How much revenue has been produced for the City of Harvey since your existence here?
City of Harvey has received $262,470.60.
To the City of Harvey? Uh, next question. Me personally, I have received a letter in the mail from Pro Champs saying I have to register my property. I'm not renting my property. I stay there. Is there a reason why residents have been receiving letters in the mail saying that they have to register their property when they're not renting out?
Because at some point, maybe, was it possible that property was for rent?
No.
Then it was a mistake. And if you replied to the letter online, you put in a discrepancy. The discrepancy is then sent to the administrator's office. The administrator's office then tells us, no, somebody's living there, don't let it take them off the list.
So you're saying residents have to put in a discrepancy?
Well, if you got a letter that says you owe money, and you don't think you do, yes, you should...
No, I'm, I'm not saying owe money. I was just saying basically registering your property, like, as if, if in turn, you like a landlord and you're renting your property out. And I've been living the miles all my life, and I have other residents that have never rented it.
I'd like to see it because we don't do hard copying letters. And here come, all our, all our bills request for registration are all done electronic.
Okay, so it wasn't no particular reason to just, no, I'm just asking just to send a letter out to every property just to find out who owns what? Was that the reason? Because a lot of my residents receive those. Okay, well...
And I might ask, I don't know whether you receive them, but prior to us being partnered with Harvey, Harvey had a local registration program in place. That ordinance was recently appealed and replaced in 2019.
Okay, thank you.
It could have been Harvey sent a letter out prior to us being partnered, I'm not sure. But we did not send a letter by our school to them.
Okay, okay. Well, my last question is, since your existence, which was in December 2018, is there a reason you haven't came to any council meeting just to give us an update on what exactly y'all doing in the process? Because I haven't seen you. Can I, can I finish? Can I finish? Because I haven't seen any representatives come. Ever since we agreed to let Pro Champs come in, since then, I haven't seen nobody even come and give an update on the progress y'all making. And now it's like renewed y'all contract.
I would be happy to come once a month if I was asked to come. I didn't think there's a need, but if there is, I'll be happy to come once a month. I was born and raised in this town. It's nice to come home. The other thing that I'll add to that, everything that you heard from me today statistically is on our platform on the webpage, which staff has access to. So if you did have some questions and you didn't want to see my face here, you could ask administration for, how many houses are registered this month, or this week, or ten?
Not true. We did, I did that. That's not true. I did that.
You did what?
Asked for the registration.
But I can't...
Well, I'm, I'm saying that's not true. So don't say that. No, I'm not saying it's not there, but what you just said isn't true.
Well, you, I didn't say...
You said, "We can ask staff."
You can ask.
I did.
If they, right now, that's not about to mean a Pro Champ.
I know, but don't do, yeah, but you said, "We can ask and get it." No, that's not true.
You can be denied with that.
Yeah, so don't say, "We can get it."
Chair recognizes the alderman from the sixth ward.
Hello, sir. Thank you for coming out and your eloquent presentation. There's some outstanding concerns that I have with Pro Champ. I think you should be commended, first of all. $262,000, that's a nice piece of change. And, but my thing is this, Pro Champ has required everybody to register their rental status and their homeowner status. Am I correct?
Rental status.
Rental status.
Now, we don't, if you own a home, it's a homestead, you're looking there. You should never hear from us, though.
One of the, one of the main issues that we have, where I have a problem with over in the sixth ward, is squatters. And, and the, the bank owns these properties. Now, the bank, when we call the police department or somebody from the planning department and they get in contact with the bank, the bank really doesn't see fit because the property values are so low here in the City of Harvey. So they don't even want to go after these people. So if these houses are owned by the bank, the only other recourse that we would have would, would, would be for Pro Champs to go after these people. Because actually, you know, that tenant squatter situation is so delicate and so intricate right now that people, it's hard to put somebody out, especially if they got kids, even if they are squatting. Now, you may have mentioned in your presentation that Pro Champs is responsible for tall grass and that kind of thing.
I said that we give you information that you can contact the proper owners of that property, meaning the banks.
Okay. Now, the only persons that I've seen out in this city cutting grass is our street department. I've seen nobody from the bank doing anything. We got a, a major problem, especially during the rainy season and in the summer growth season with tall grass and, and, uh, properties abandoned by the bank that the bank just don't want. I know a few prime examples right now. I would strongly suggest, and I would greatly like to see Pro Champ go after them, but I haven't seen that. I know you're getting the, the money from the rental, the renters aspect of it, but I think the banks need to be held accountable. And, and, and one more thing, when Pro Champs came in, everybody here was excited about Pro Champs coming in. And as chairman of the finance committee, I agree with my colleague. I have not heard one thin dime that was produced from Pro Champs until tonight, which is a year later. That's, that's tragic. That's actually tragic. The lack of transparency that has grown among this, this administration and Pro Champ and this city council is none, is zilch, is zero, is none. None whatsoever. That's the end of my statement.
If I could respond...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Just go back. There is a platform that is web-based, that access is given to people in administration. They have access to everything that you would ask for. Now, whether they give it to you or not, we can't dictate that. But it's there. And as I said, we have in Illinois 51 communities. Do you want me to come here once a month and give you anything? Or we have...
I would like for you to come once every other month. Because that's one of the things that we agreed upon when we initially voted for Pro Champs that night, that you all would come in and give the city council an update on what's going on, on how, if you need assistance, if you need updates on whatever, the city council needs to be held accountable. We can't always get the information necessary rendered from the city. You know, it's, we, we just can't get it unless we put in a foyer or something, but, but...
There's another alternative I think I'd be to do, besides come here every other month or every month or a week before.
Quarterly. You can do it every three months.
You all have...
Yes.
I can send out this information once a month here a year.
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine.
I mean, we're not here to fight...
No, 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 no. We're just here to, to get the kinks out. We're combing the kinks out now.
I'm willing to do anything to make a community happy. I just don't think, yes, it's a lot of money, $262,000, a million dollars. What that should be used for, some of it, is property maintenance issues, like you said, the purpose of cutting grass. So if I pay them for the works, there's extra money to pay them for the works department for cutting grass or an independent contractor to help them cut their grass.
But sir, somebody's got to go after the banks. And the banks really don't care. That's the point I'm making.
They're paying, as you see, they're paying. They may not care, but they're paying because they know if they don't, they're going to give a judgment.
Well, when you come to visit us every three months, we could see that information on a piece of paper, and then we'll know for certain whether or not the banks are paying.
But we're fini...
Yes, sir.
We cannot, I mean, Pro Champs cannot file judgments against the banks. We don't have lawyers in the world for your legal team. Should be filing judgments against the banks for cutting grass.
Yeah.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I don't even want to go into that.
I'm just saying, we can't do any of those.
Ma'am, ma'am, may I?
Chair recognizes the alderman from the fifth ward.
Uh, I'm sorry, can I have your name again?
Stan.
Stan, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, I for one, have had several conversations with Mr. Timothy Williams. Since you all have arrived, I understand exactly what Pro Champ does and enables us to do. And because we're now able to identify the owners of these properties, we're then able, when we do send out our public works department to, to cut these vacant lots or, I'm sorry, vacant properties and things, we know who to assign that, that fee to, which is those banks. And in turn, it gives us the opportunity to deem those, that individual property and those property owners as a nuisance when we do send our legal team to court. It allows us to establish a track record saying that we've had to take care of this property, be it bought ups, be it, you know, criminal activity, be it keeping up with the exterior and lawn care as far as it, it, it may be. We're able to document those things, take it into court and, and deem them a nuisance, and ultimately gain ownership of those properties to where then we could decide whether they need to be tore down or, or be fitting for another program. And, and when that was explained to me, then I understood what Pro Champ was doing from, from that perspective. I also want to say that as far as Upstate is concerned, I think this is a great opportunity where we could begin to utilize some of our other committee structures to where we could have you, or, or you, or representative, or even a report from the mayor's office on the status of Pro Champs as we hold these different committee meetings, be it a public works committee, or a public safety committee, or even a finance committee in, in concerns to the revenue that's being generated. That's an avenue that we have to begin to, to use more often to keep these updates coming in regularly. Because sometimes these things do not be fitting for a city council meeting. But I do understand the value that Pro Champs has brought to the City of Harvey and the ability that it's given us to deal with some of our issues here. And I'd say thank you. And I, I hope this partnership continues.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The chair entertain a motion to approve?
Second. I'm sorry, motion, uh...
You already had one. You already had one.
Did we?
There was a motion by the fifth, a motion by the fifth, a second by the first. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Drawinski?
Yes.
Alderman Tober?
Yes.
Alderman Kruger?
Yes.
Alderman Rangoel?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
No.
Motion carried and had a resolution two nine six four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on the agenda is an ordinance approving text amendments to the zoning ordinance of the City of Harvey as amended concerning automobile-oriented uses and video gaming terminal establishments. Chair would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A motion by the first. Um, Mayor, can we, can we please act it to present this ordinance, please? Yes, um, we'll give the, prior to proceeding, we'll give the, the council some more clarity as far as what is about Mr. Williams and Mr. Greiford, if you'd be some time.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would really just tighten up the regulations going forward. It's grandfathered existing businesses, but in terms of auto, truck, or video gaming uses going forward, new ones coming to town, they would come under this new zoning requirements. But basically, the most important change is that it requires those kinds of uses to go through the main, especially use required, which needs to ask both of the plant commission and then the city council. So if you have, let's say, a truck rental or truck repair or tire sales business, they would have to have the plant commission and the city council. So that's, that's the most important change that this ordinance would do. There are other changes that, that's most important.
Mr. Greiford, now, didn't we...
Chair recognizes the alderman from the first ward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just want to confirm for the fact that after doing my due diligence and reading this, current individuals who have the gambling kiosks in, in their establishment, they are not going to be subject to any zoning requirements per se because they are grandfathered in.
Exactly.
So the establishment, but say hypothetically, how many used tire places I have in the first ward, if I want to open up Shirley B's used tire, I would then, instead of automatically opening up, have to go to the zoning
Right.
and ask permission and get the, get it authorized before I open up another tire shop in that vicinity, correct?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes the alderman from the sixth ward.
Uh, Mr. Greiford, I don't know if you were here with the city at that particular time, but when this city council was first elected in, one of the, one of the first things that was on the agenda was for the video gaming. And we put a one cent sales tax on every penny that was spent in that video gaming. Now, for us to diminish the amount of video gaming that comes into the community, wouldn't that diminish our resources and income or money that comes into the city as well?
Can you repeat that question so that I, that I can, I want to understand that question? Can you repeat that question, Alderman?
Okay. Mayor, when, when this city council first got elected, there was a, a resolution that we voted on to, to regain and absorb a one cent sales tax on video gaming.
Were we gaining or absorbing?
Well, we were gaining one cent
Okay.
out of every video game that's here in the city.
Okay.
So if we're going to put a limit on video gaming, and I'm not saying that, that they go through the planning, the zoning commission, then come before the city council in order to put the game in, but the chances are that gaming continuing to come in and us generating more money is going to diminish. That's basically what I'm saying.
Got it. Okay, okay, got it. Um, thank you so much, Alderman. You want to answer that? Can you answer that? Or Mr. Williams can't answer that? I can answer it too.
No, it would not diminish at all. We're familiar with the push tax that the council approved, but this would not diminish it. It's just another process in which we would be able to vet those applications and ensure that it meets the standards that we want the city. So not minimize or eliminate it, just give another set of eyes on it to make sure that we don't have any problem or nuisance business.
So, so Mr. Williams, one, one of the things...
So, so Mr. Williams, one of, one of the things that, uh, my first ward colleague mentioned is that every tire shop that's already existing in the city of Harvey, as well as truck repair, as well as used car lots, that's already here, they will not be inclusive into this new ordinance that we're about to undertake right now, is that correct?
That's correct, the business license will not be impacted.
Okay, okay.
And, and to be clear, as far as the push tax is, is tax is concerned, that wasn't implemented either. Because there's some outstanding litigation that's going on that we need clarity on regarding the push tax. So even though we passed that, it was, it was never implemented because we're waiting to see the outcome of that litigation. It's not the city of Harvey's litigation, but it's litigation that is taking place in other jurisdictions. Um, uh, actually, the second, uh, Alderman from the second ward.
So my issue with it is not that, um, it's gonna hurt other businesses, more so for my colleagues and the idea that we're going to give a non-elected board, which the board he's speaking, I'm speaking of is the zoning committee commission, which is appointed by the mayor, the ability to deny business from coming to our community when we were the ones elected to do so. So if anything, I think those currently, which doesn't happen, I think those gaming people or applic- business applications should come across the council and not some zoning board appointed by the mayor. So that's my issue with the whole ordinance.
Mr. Williams?
The council does not vote, they would only make a recommendation.
Yeah, that's why I said, we don't, we currently don't make recommendations.
I'm sorry, the plant commission would not.
The zoning commission does not vote, they only make a recommendation. And the reason why zoning and planning boards are in, in place in the first place is because they would establish to create the barrier and the arbitrary nation, nature between city councils that don't like the mayor having, um, uh, the appointment power of the, of the zoning board.
Yeah.
But also, um, having, so having, so they aren't arbitrary and capricious. So basically, what happens is, is when a zoning or planning board receives a plan, a zone, a request for a zoning change, request for a special use permit, or even variances for that particular matter, what happens at the end of the day, they're able to make a clear identified decision on their own. Based on that, just like with many other boards that many of you have sat on at some point in time or another, they make that recommendation to the council. It is for the council to decide whether to accept that recommendation or not.
So, Mayor, so my, so then my issue is, why aren't we voting on a business license rather than a zoning change? 'Cause even though we might vote on the zoning change, your office still can go deny a business license.
We can deny a business license if they don't.
You, 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 not we.
We can deny a business license if the, um, if the, the business does not comply with the requirements under the code.
Correct.
But if they comply with the requirements under the code, then even we have an issue as far as that's concerned.
Yeah, so if we're requiring them to have this zoning change, that's just adding some more reasons or potential extra work for them to happen and extending the process of actually opening up a business in Harvey, because they have to go in front of the zoning board. The zoning board has to have time to create a recommendation. The recommendation has to have time to come to the council, the council can either debate it, send it to committee, or approve it, or deny it, giving the owner of that business even more red tape to come through when, at the end of the day, even after we make that zoning change, the mayor's office or city administrator could still deny their business permit regardless if we made the zoning change or not. So the idea that this will put more power into the, uh, council hand, I, that's not true.
We're not trying to put any power into anybody's hands, this is not an issue about power.
No, well, you said the arbitration between the council and the municipality, right, that's what the purpose of the zoning.
Arbitrary, arbitrary.
Which results to law, right?
Arbitrary and capricious, capriciousness of some councils.
No, some councils.
So, but this is not about that. So would you like to clear that up a little bit, uh, Mr. Mr. Greifert?
Sure, the, uh, plant commission, like you said, they're an advisory body and they are composed of volunteers, some of whom have, uh, expertise or familiarity with plant design, architecture, um, and, and just, you know, making the city look better. So their, their goal as volunteers is really to help put together recommendations and it's laid out in the ordinance for things like quality sign, you wanna have a business with a attractive sign, not a tarp, but an actual permanent sign that looks good. You wanna paint parking lot, you don't want just like dirt parking lot, you wanna paint one that's striped. You might want fencing, you might want landscaping, those are some of the things that we're putting into the ordinance so that we can raise the bar a little bit, not make it overly burdensome, but have some requirements so that we, you know, lift up this standard for somebody's auto, truck, and video gaming uses. But we think we could do this in an efficient way, so the plant commission is meeting pretty much every month. Um, it's not a long, delayed process, not a costly process. They make their advisory recommendation, and then, and then the city council, of course, makes the decision by whether they like, you know, the plant commission is recommended to this spot.
And regardless of, and regardless of whether the planning and zoning board is appointed by the mayor, which they have been for years. I even sat on this, on the zoning and planning board of appeals with the city of Harvey from two thousand three to two thousand nine. Even if that's the case, what are we saying, we don't trust our residents who have a, who have a stake in our community to even make an opinion as far as what we do? Because I heard, I heard, I heard issues of transparency this, this evening, you know, and we just had a, um, an issue that, that failed primarily because of, you know what I'm saying, the community. We want the community to be involved. This is where we're saying that, now we're saying we don't want the community involved, we don't want the zoning board to be involved to make a recommendation as far as what they want in their community? We don't want it now. Chair recognizes.
No, 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 I'm not doing my point, Mayor, hold on, hold on, no, 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 no. No, I'm.
Chair recognizes.
Okay, no, Alderman Rogers, I'm sorry, but I was not finished.
The fifth ward.
No, 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 Mayor, I wasn't done, I was, I needed to get better clarification for Nick, uh, Mayor, Mayor.
Are you recognizing me, Alderman? Yes.
So no, I, I wasn't arguing my point, not arguing, but discussing and talking, uh, in terms of, like I said, Nick brought up signs and all that. We passed the ordinance on this council actually requiring all signs to be approved by either you or signed off by the city administrator. So the idea that we're gonna put more red tape for a business opener, business owner to open up a tire shop or, um, gaming situation, I just think that's like pointless.
The only red tape that, that, that most of them get is having to go to committee that doesn't have the meetings when the meetings are.
No, the only red tape is probably going to your office, Mayor.
The chair recognizes the alderman from the fifth ward.
Thank you, um, just to, two comments, uh, I think one comment, one question. So, um, Mayor, for me, I, I think, uh, this is definitely something that, uh, is needed. The, the only thing that, that wrecks the confidence in the process is, number one, I would like to have the opportunity, per our ordinance, to confirm that advisory board. We have not had that opportunity. I do not know the individuals that serve on that board. I have not, they have not come before council, and it makes it difficult to trust this particular process when council has not given the opportunity to, uh, as per our ordinance, consent, uh, on that issue. Secondly, if you can provide clarity, 'cause from what I'm understanding, uh, as I read it, a- and I also did serve on the planning commission as well, but it was not automatic. So a, a, a denial recommendation from this advisory board, the petitioner still has to, uh, do the necessary paperwork to have their, their, their petition heard by the council. It does not automatically come to the council. And so I want to make sure that, um, in my experience, all of them were not made aware. They just simply walked away thinking that was a no, that was the end of the day. Um, and we can only take it from your word that those who do receive a denial or a negative recommendation, if you will, from this advisory committee will be advised that they have a right to have their petition heard before city council.
Most of them that, that come represented do.
When they're represented, yes.
They know that in advance.
Okay.
Um, a- and some of them come, I believe, with the, at least from my experience, come with the intention of, or the hopes that maybe they'll be denied and they'll be glitching process, so they'll have the rights to sue it some later time. Um, but that's just my opinion as far as my experiences has shown me. And we do have a few that have, have taken those approaches with the city. And then as soon as the council or the, or the, the board tells them no, the lawsuit is filed.
Thank you.
Kinda what happens and what they do. Chair recognizes the alderman from the sixth ward.
Uh, thank you, Mayor.
The, uh, wait, hold on, hold on, I'm, I'm sorry, uh, Alderman Key.
I'm afraid, I'm afraid you're mistaken, I think I was after the stage, but, but.
No, no, you weren't even close.
I would yield, I would yield.
So it's on the video, wasn't even close.
Um, thank you, Mayor, the first thing I would like to offer suggestion to the council and, uh, for everybody to understand, when you get to an opportunity to ask a question, let it go around to all the other aldermen's and then ask a second question. If you can't figure out the question, you remember it right then, it's really not fair to get a second chance to ask a question before everybody has spoke. So I'm just making a suggestion, whenever the council or any alderman make a suggestion or ask their questions, wait until it goes around the room and then call that person's name again. Then we won't have this problem of who raised their hand and all that, you know, okay? All right.
Thank you very much, and it's, before you, so you do have a question, Alderman's coming up.
Yes.
Before you get there, and that's the reason why I tried to, to move it along, but if people continue to disrupt, even though I try to move it along, because I recognize that. So, so thank you very much.
Um, my second question is for, uh, Mr. Greifert, um, how many current video game terminals do we have in Harvey right now?
They don't have statistics to report about that.
You don't have, have a number, no, that goes along with the business licenses, right? Video gaming, and we don't have, we don't have, we don't know how many video gaming places that we have in Harvey already?
No, that's something that we should be able to get out of the building department, which is not available right now.
We don't just, we just don't walk around thinking somebody's gonna ask that question and just have the number right, you know, off the top of our head.
Okay, well, that's just another, just my last question, uh, Mayor, when you said when it comes to the committee that you want the residents to be involved, yes, we do want our residents to be involved, but we just wanna be included in the process of the residents that are either, I don't know if they even voted in or recommended in, it's like these committees start off without us even knowing, we even have a committee, and next, you know, you see it on, on Zoom or whatever, um, the presentation that you guys had already put a staff already together, you know, for the planning and zoning and stuff and everything, without even giving us even consideration of what we would like or may suggest. So there's nothing wrong, we want our residents here. We just wanna have more input on who exactly do we have representing our residents. If all of them can't do it, that should be a privilege to be a resident to represent each ward or to represent the people, that should be a privilege 'cause you're speaking for everybody. So it should be almost like an election, or at least just consideration to the council. Thank you, Mayor, that's it.
Thank you, um, chair recognizes the alderman from the sixth ward.
Thank you, uh, uh, this question is directed at Mr. Greifert. Um, the, uh, plan, I, I attended a planning and zoning board recently, a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, and I think there were seven members that were making recommendations of certain cities, uh, resolutions and ordinances that the city was supposed to be brought to the city council. The, uh, the question that I have, if, if four out of those seven members decide that they don't want it, it will never, ever make it to the city council regardless. And, and I think that's what, uh, just to echo and reiterate what my second ward colleague was saying, was that the city council should be a part of this process when it comes down to actually allowing businesses. Now, and I'm all in favor for our residents from the planning and zoning commission to, to have a part in this democracy that we call the city of Harvey, and we want everybody to have some, some valid input. But on the other hand, I think that any businesses that's denied or totally denied, uh, before they can come before the city council is wrong, no way of putting it.
Yes, if a, if a person goes before the zoning board and they, and the recommendation is to deny, that recommendation goes to the city council. And the city council decides whether to accept that recommendation or not. So it's not automatic, I mean, the alderman from the fifth ward just, had just discussed this, that that's what happens. So if there's a, if there's a, if someone goes before, to be clear, if someone goes before the zoning board, and the zoning board hears their, their case. The zoning board should be, okay, putting together, um, facts and a finding and a rec- facts and finding and a recommendation. That recommendation is to the city council.
Now, Mayor, that may hold true in this, in this current administration, but I do know for a fact that some of the ideas that were, some of the variances, uh, for, for example, to put a fence up in the front yard, okay? You have to have a variance permit, it has to go before planning and zoning. If the planning and zoning board denies it, it never made it to the city council. I do know that for a fact, and I'm not saying that it occurs here, but we don't know anything, uh, about who, who these people are. I just had an opportunity to meet some of them a couple of weeks ago. So, that being said, and I do understand what, what Alderman Randallwell was saying, you know, being a former member, but, you know, that may not occur then, but I do know for a fact that sometimes if you had four votes, it would never, ever get to the city council.
That's what we're trying to do it the right way, Alderman. We're trying to.
Okay.
Um, so chair recognizes the alderman from the second ward.
No, it was actually. Sure, I'm sorry.
You know, I, I am in just total amazement and yet in total disappointment. I cannot believe the conversations we've been having here tonight. We talk, we talk, and it's just talking that we want a better city. We have seven people sitting on this board and five of us has been here long enough. I'm in amazement with some of the aldermen sitting there saying, oh, wow, I don't know who's on the planning committee. Did you know prior? Did you know in your first term? 'Cause I know I didn't. Did you know in your first term on who was sitting on the committee? I know I didn't. When you worked for the city, when you talked about your history, or you talked, I am getting upset, so I'm gonna take it down. Did you know who was on all these committees? You guys are sitting here acting like this is the first time, the first time that this, this leadership is a strong.
This is the first time that I sat on the city council. As an employee, I didn't need to know, as a council member, I do.
No, that was your fault.
You know what? When you sat here and you talked, and you sat there and I, and you talked, I listened. Same thing with you, but the minute I say something that you disagree with, you're gonna interrupt me?
No, Shirley, you don't have no kids, stop pointing.
Shirley, we were having a conversation.
Oh, it's okay for you to point at me, you just did that, it's okay to see your finger out in my face.
Hey, Shirley, you ain't got no kids.
Let's get some water.
You're right, but we're acting like a bunch of kids in here.
But you don't have any of the kids that's acting like you.
We are all acting like kids.
No, you're acting like a kid, I'm not gonna take blame for that.
Oh, we're hitting this.
Would you please, Alderman?
She said I'm acting like a kid, she's acting like a kid.
And I am in that, we're all sitting here.
She talking to me, she talking to me, she talking to me, she turned around and pointed at me, so that means she's talking to me.
Would you please allow it to continue?
But see, this.
Because she didn't know something, she mad at us?
That's, that's again.
You didn't know that, Shirley, that, they knew, this, that first time, because you didn't know during your term, don't blame us. They had nothing to do with us.
That is not the first term.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
No, wait.
Tyrone, you was elected before? This your first time as Alderman?
Alderman's over, please recognize the chair. Thank you. Look here. I get it.
I don't.
And, well, I would appreciate if you would refrain from commenting while I'm talking, good sir. What I want us to do, just for a moment, is just breathe. That's it. Now, we have points that we want to make, and we are passionate about those points. And I appreciate that. And believe in me, I'm just as passionate about mine as well. But we also have to do that with a sense of decorum and respect and civility. If we cannot do that, we cannot function as a board. Now, this is what I would like to do. I'm going to go back to the alderwoman of the first ward.
Thank you.
She is going to continue to say what she was saying respectfully.
Yes.
Okay, and we are gonna respectfully listen, and we are gonna try to keep some order and decorum in this chamber.
First and foremost, I apologize. I, I am just very, very passionate about my town, just like you are. But when I see opportunities, uh, taking a, many of the zoning, so we can have more buildings, like the furniture store on a hundred and, and on Halsted, that's a beautiful site. When we can have pavement, when we can have buildings that look halfway decent instead of the blinking lights, like we're some kinda ghetto, when we expect more. And that's all this thing is saying. But yet, this has been on the agenda for over three times already, and we're acting like this is the first time. Did I not contact you, Nick? Did I not contact you? Did I not contact the attorneys? I did my due, no, I'm talking.
I ain't interrupt you, just go ahead and talk.
Yeah, could you?
Oh, now see, was that respectful?
Yes.
I didn't interrupt you, I raised my hand, and you start talking over here.
Motion in discussion. My motion override.
Is the motion in discussion?
I second.
There's a motion in the second, motion by the fifth, second by the first. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
No.
Alderman Cruda?
Yes.
Alderman Randallwell?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
Yes.
Alderman Chover?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for that motion. The chair will. Chair recognizes a motion to approve?
I make a motion to send to legislative committee.
There's already a motion by, oh, there was a motion by the first already outstanding, and we're waiting to. Was there anyone, so there was a motion to approve by the first, but there was a second to approve.
Second.
There was a motion by the first and a second by the second, I mean by the fifth, excuse me. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Key?
No.
Can you repeat that? My mind is in chaos. There's a motion to approve?
Yeah, yes.
Alderman Chover?
No.
Alderman Cruda?
Yes.
Alderman Groinsky?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?
No.
Alderman Randallwell?
Yes.
Motion carried and has ordinance three, four, four, five, thirty-four point five.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving a letter of understanding with the Illinois Department of Transportation in connection with the Wood Street project. Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by the fifth, second by the.
Point of order. Am I, am I looking at?
The chair recognizes the alderman from the sixth ward.
Are we looking at resolution twenty-nine sixty-one, a resolution to approve the letter of understanding for the Illinois Department of Transportation connected to the Dixie's, Dixie Highway project?
No, Wood Street.
Okay. He just said Wood Street.
There's a motion in the second?
Yeah, you're gonna call the roll?
All right.
He had a question as far as that.
Go ahead, I'm good, I'm good.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Randallwell?
Yes.
Alderman Key?
Yes.
Alderman Rogers?